Americans and to the republic, which it stands in one nation. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so in attendance in our conference room, we have Commissioner Coyle.
Good morning.
And myself, and I'm looking for Commissioner Churchello seems to be here on Zoom. Are you there?
Morning. Morning, Commissioner. And let me, um, let me just apologize if you hear noises. I'm home today because I'm having my roof done. If you hear pounding of nails or whatnot, you'll, you'll understand, but I'll keep it, I'll keep me muted for wherever I can.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, we're going to move right along to our consent agenda.
Well, I moved to approve the August first, 2024 public and non-public meeting minutes and the August eighth, 2024 public and meeting minutes.
Second.
Second. Um, any discussion on the meeting minutes?
Um, actually, I'm just going to retract my motion and just, just with respect to the August first meeting, I wasn't there, so. I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually bifurcate the motions. So that because I'm going to abstain from the vote on the first because I wasn't present and I'll just vote on it. So. I'm gonna, I'll re, uh, readdress the motion and I move to approve the August first, 2024 public and non-public meetings.
Second. Uh, any discussion on the August one meeting minutes, Commissioner Churchello?
Yes.
Okay, no discussion. I, okay, so those in favor, Commissioner Churchello?
Yes.
I'm in favor. Commissioner Coyle was abstaining.
Uh, I move to approve the August eighth, 2024 public meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the August eighth public meeting minutes?
Thorough as usual. Thank you.
Done well.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Churchello?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. Those meeting minutes are accepted. Next, we have, uh, Assisted Living Week. Event calendar informational. Is there any discussion on that? Would you like to chime in on that?
Sure. So Assisted Living Week is next week. It will run Monday through Friday for us. We have lots of fun events for our residents. Um, some of the highlights that they're looking forward to is we're bringing in some birds and owls. So we'll, we're very excited about that. And then we'll have our second annual Rachees event on Friday, um, where we're hitting up superlatives. We have invited resident families to come award. Um, and partake in that as well. So just a really fun week for our residents. Uh, we have the calendar posted, so we'll be wearing certain colors. So anybody and everyone is able to participate in that as well.
All right, excellent. Any other discussion on the Assisted Living Week?
It sounds great. It really is something nice for the residents and it's nice to see, you know, have these activities and.
The more engagement, the better.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, moving on, we have an agency staff report, uh, that is just informational. Uh, we have any comments on that?
Just to the extent that it dovetails with some of the, uh, staffing agreements and rates going up, you know, what we're seeing is. Um, it, it appears to me we're staffing most from the two agencies that have the highest. For, and I'm, I'm talking sort of exclusively right now with respect to L and As, but that. The highest rates were staffing the most of L and As. Is that just because of the availability or what, what are we finding? In terms of why we're working mostly with courier staff and MAS?
So historically, those are the two leaders of agency, you know, staffing and different agencies kind of focus on different staffing. So we have one that solely focuses. Well, not solely, but the majority of the staff we get from them are nurses. And so they don't really, um, project out their L and As. So these are the two main L and A providers.
Okay. And what we're seeing is rates are going up even further for MAS, for instance.
And I don't, I don't, no, I know Allison has been working on the pricing.
Yeah, we're spreading out the L and As across the agencies now after having conversations with them. So just because of the levels of the cost, um, we are talking about clinical aspects of that and requirements for that, but we're gonna. Kind of level it out a little bit differently than all one, one or two agencies because. Um, I just think it's easier to continue to build some of those relationships as we're trying to decrease the costs on some of those things.
I recognize that one of the agencies had a rather low, uh, price on the L and As, Hampstead. Uh, employment or I forget.
Time. Crime time. Hampstead Nursing Services.
That's a Hampstead Nursing Service.
They're going up, but still their rate is low, sooner than lower than courier staff.
So are they, um, is that something that we've tried to tap into? So we don't have to spend so much money?
Um, we're not getting, um, we are looking at them, but because the rate is so low, trying to get travelers to come here for that rate is not. So what I'm finding is the price point for the L and As is between the, we're able to negotiate, it was between fifty-two and fifty-five dollars. Some of them were sixty and sixty-five and we moved those down. So that seems to be the price point. Um, this. Rate was negotiated by the former Long Come Care Administrator. So I don't know how we got forty-four, but we're not having as much like behind it and L and A and L and As through them. I think this, if nothing else, this continues to emphasize our need to recruit and bring in our own staff, both for. From a price point and quality of care.
Without a doubt. Okay. Uh, moving on. Accounts payable list.
I move to approve the September fifth, 2024 accounts payable with total of. One million, six hundred and eighty thousand, seventy-four dollars and ninety-two cents.
Second.
Uh, any discussion on this motion?
Uh, we do have some projects going on for ARPA related projects that are contributing to this cause, particularly with, uh, facilities. Um, and otherwise, um, it's okay. Contracted nursing is pretty high in this.
It is, but I'm sure we're watching it.
Right, exactly. And I think this is an example of where it's so great that in terms of. Being responsive from last year where we're and the team over at, uh, Long Term Care. And finance collaborating to put together the, the spreadsheets and data so we can identify and see. Our use of, uh, where we are from a budgetary standpoint on resources, both staffing and, uh. And contracted nursing. So we appreciate that.
And I review those numbers every, every other week I get them and we're still at the percentage at where we should be for the use year. We're still below, a little bit below when it comes to, you know, quite a few thousands of dollars. So. We're still right on target to stay on budget.
Fantastic. Thank you for being so attentive to that. And I think we'll probably have that on the agenda in the next couple of weeks, right? But we appreciate that.
Okay, so motion on the floor to accept the accounts payable list. Commissioner Churchello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, moving on to commissioner updates. Anybody have anything that they would like to share?
Uh, I would like to welcome our new long-term care administrator, um, Chantel Jocconin. Um, we are very excited to have you on board. Um, it's, it's free. I think, um. We have a, you know, you probably heard that we are deficiency free, which is amazing, the third year in a row. And a good credit to that or the, the people to your right and, um. Um, we are happy for really welcoming you on board. You have a great team around you and. I have no doubt that there's, uh, great things ahead to tackle some of these issues we're having with, at least with staffing. So.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Uh, Commissioner Churchello, do you have any update?
I have nothing.
Okay, um, I have a couple of things. First of all, uh, welcome, Chantel. We're thrilled to have you here.
Very grateful.
And I, I also want to, uh, commend, uh, Kendra and Michelle for their diligent work during the time that, um. This transition, I, I, we, you guys did a great job and I'm very pleased.
And there's, and I may interject just one thing. There's no way we would have had a deficiency free survey without your work.
Oh, for sure.
I mean, seriously, so. You guys were just, and even challenges within the survey that you triaged and so, yeah, I just echo those sentiments.
I have one other item, uh, that I'd like to, uh, share. Um, the Republican Party of New Hampshire was gifted a, an old document. Uh, for Rockingham County. It's from seventeen eighty-five. It's an original document that came from a collector in Louisiana that just decided that they wanted to gift it to us. Here in New Hampshire. And, um, it's the oath that Rockingham County took. To the other states and to the surrounding area that they would keep the peace and join the. The newly formed country.
Wow.
Uh, I mean, I haven't read the whole thing because it's difficult to read right now. I'm, I'm looking forward to a trans, uh, translation, not, not translation, uh. To the writing of it. So I can read all the words, some of this kind of, some funny letters as an F that is supposed to be an S and. I'm not used to reading those kind of documents, but was historical, was very interesting. So I was invited to attend the official signing. Of the, uh, document over to the state archives. Along with, uh, registry deeds, register deeds Kathy Stacy was also there in attendance. Uh, and the state archives is a wonderful place. It's got all kinds of documents and. Uh, I, I enjoyed the excitement of, uh, the curators to. Uh, and you know, bring in such a new and exclusive document. I also noted I saw a map of Rockingham County that was much larger than Rockingham County is now. It used to include Stratford and pretty much was. The populated area of New Hampshire. So that was an interesting meeting and a nice find.
That is wonderful. I wonder if it would be possible to get a replica or like, I don't know if you could get, they probably can't photograph it, but. I'm not an archivist, but to have something that we could have on display here is so significant and, you know. As the hub of Rockingham County here, it would be nice to have a display that maybe by the singer entrance that people could. When you're waiting for someone, look at.
I, I discussed that with them while I was there.
Okay.
And, uh, they have, they just got a brand new scanner. And they're going to be scanning the document and I'm sure it'll be touched up a little bit so that we'll get rid of some of the stains. And, um, we'll be able to make a replica and, uh, put it in a frame and you display it either in the singer entrance or in our new municipal building.
Or both.
Or both. Uh, it, it's really an interesting document because it's so old and yeah, I, you know, we'll. Uh, it won't cost us too much to do that, I'm sure, but, uh, that is in the works.
Right, that, that'd be fabulous.
Okay, that concludes my. Report. All right, we'll move on to, uh.
Hampstead Nursing.
Hampstead Nursing Services rate increase.
I move to approve the Hampstead Nursing Services per diem billing rates effective September first, twenty twenty-four, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long Term, of Human Resources.
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Um, the rate was, uh, extraordinarily low leading up to this, uh, comparatively, um, thirty-four and thirty-six dollars for L and As and focusing on that. So. Um, where they're going is still. Low relative to agency uses, but as, uh, Allison identified. It's still a struggle to get, uh, L and As into this role at that contracted rate.
Uh, see no further discussion. Uh. Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Churchello?
Yes, sorry.
And I vote yes. So that passes. Uh, MAS staffing rate addendum approval.
I move to approve the MAS medical staffing rate addendum and authorize the acting chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, does this contract, this change also go into effect first September first, Allison? I didn't, I may have missed it.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm sorry.
I didn't. Yeah, I didn't notice it. So I wasn't, I mean, that's something obviously we want to confirm because the rates. Are going up quite a bit with MAS and we use play right now, just looking at the number of individuals. We have for MAS.
Actually, we're dropping to fifty-five from sixty on the CNA.
This is going down to fifty-five.
Yeah, so the RN and the LPN are still about eighty and seventy, but these L and A rate is going down to fifty-five.
And where it looks like, um, in terms of. The.
And then the holiday was based on a rate of one point five, um, times on the holiday and then doing a times ten dollars.
Right, and so we have, it looks like we just have one RN. Right now for MAS.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll find out the date and apologize for that.
Thanks.
So shall we table that?
I.
Or?
I feel comfortable moving forward because it is a reduction a little bit from, um, the old rate being. Uh, sixty down to the fifty-five on L and A.
Whatever date it starts is to our benefit. So.
Right.
It's all good. Okay, so on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Churchello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, that's approved. Uh, next, the amended L and A apprentice program agreement approval.
I move to approve the, uh, amended L and A apprentice program agreement as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
And, uh, any discussion on that?
I do.
Uh, Commissioner Churchello?
Yeah, Allison, can you explain the difference between this new program and the old program?
Um, this pro, the L and A program that we had that you already previously approved, um, hasn't changed much. We just updated it. To allow for anybody where we're going to pay the cost for the, um, student to go through. Um, any viable place that they choose to, um, and allow them to work up to twenty-nine hours at Rockingham County. When they're done their program, they would come onto us, they would come back onto us as an L and A and stay on with us for, you know, hopefully. Over the year mark so that, um, they would still be entitled to the sign-on bonus as well. What we did was. We realized we had some internal candidates that worked for games, um, and others that, um, contacted Autumn with an interest. Where they're already working for us in a capacity, um, and they wanted to be able to take advantage of this program. So that was the tweets that I talked about, I think, two weeks ago. And, um, you gave me approval to go back out to, uh, the attorney just to. Ensure that the changes that we made were okay, wouldn't, um, have any impact on us. So I hope that helps.
Yeah, uh, and so am I to understand that the, 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 the only big difference would be. Instead of the classroom being inside Rockingham County, they could go to different classrooms. Is that, is that the major, the major difference?
Yeah, we, um, stopped doing the classes internal because we could, uh, the minimum requirement was for five and by the time we would get five candidates, two or three would drop off. And so we're still trying to get five candidates. So now we think it's more, uh, beneficial to us that if we have anybody that's interested in going to the L and A program. Um, to pay for it, allow them to go to that facility, um, have L and A health careers, a couple of community colleges. And we'll stay in touch with them along that program, pay for the program for them. And allow them then to pick up ours here if they choose to. It's not required, but they know that. The arrangement is that they will come back to us at the completion of that. They have a certain period of time to. Get their, uh, license and then they will come on board with us in a part-time or full-time capacity.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Right.
Any further discussion, Commissioner Coyle?
Uh, yeah, just two things. One, I do think that this is a great, doing it this way will really help with trying to onboard more people because there is the flexibility. Not just with, um, you know, with the timing, but also location, more conducive to. Um, to people's like living arrangements. Um, the other consideration I had is. What is the sense about the reimburse, um, a requirement and the enforceability of reimbursement if. Um, an individual goes through the program and then does not fulfill their, um, obligations with accounting.
It's, it's really, it's really not enforceable, but we, we're putting the language in there because we want to show that there's an investment. We are, you know. A county, it's taxpayer funded. So we're being serious about it. And if they don't, we would attempt to contact them to say, hey, we put you through this class. We paid for it. We would like to work out some sort of negotiation to pay it back. But we know. As any contractual thing, that it's, it's non-enforceable unless we went to small plans for it, which we probably would not want to.
Uh, I reviewed all the changes and liked them. And a particular note to that, uh, issue was that, um. There was a provision for. An employer who scooped up one of our trained, you know, that we spent the money to train could, uh, send us the money on their behalf. Uh, for, for the training. It, it's small, but it, it just emphasizes that we're not. Giving you this money for nothing. We're giving this money to you so that you'll come to work for us, at least for a year.
And we still have the sign-on bonus on top of that too. So that's another.
So they should have more of a reason.
That's the other one we said to that end of the statement. So, yeah.
Do you know anyone that wants to be an L and A? Bring them on. We'll ta, train you. We'll, we'd love to have you. Okay, so with that, I think that completes our discussion. Uh, Commissioner Churchello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next is the Lawson Group contract.
I move to approve the Lawson Group contract renewal for the period beginning August first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven and authorize the acting chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended. By the Senior Director of Human Resources.
So, oh, sorry.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this contract?
Um, it wasn't clear to me, Allison, do we have, I mean, how different the contract is from our prior contract of the Lawson Group.
We highlighted some of those changes.
Yeah, I saw the highlights. I didn't realize, I didn't, it wasn't clear to me that those were the new terms.
Other changes. Are those other new terms? The highlighted changes in there, I apologize.
Yes, they are. Julie, um, indicated that on my copy.
I looked at all the highlighted changes and they, they looked good, but I was, I had the same. I wasn't sure.
Right.
If it was something you wanted to point out to us, right? But it's all good as far as I'm concerned.
It's more the contractual stuff that we're kind of, all the contracts are coming back with. We haven't done one with them for a couple of years now. So they're just bringing it up to. Standard with some of their other contracts.
Lawyers need to justify their existence sometimes.
I know.
I resemble that.
Not you.
I resemble that.
Okay, so on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Churchello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, uh, travel and training request approval.
I move to approve a travel and training request for three human resources employees, AKA EV, and the third to be determined to attend the New Hampshire Association of Counties Annual Conference. Held at the Omni Mount Washington Resort, November eleventh and twelfth, twenty twenty-four, at an estimated total cost of four thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-seven cents, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Okay, uh, discussion on this motion?
I have some discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Coyle, go ahead.
No, you're, you're in.
No, please go ahead.
Commissioner Churchello, you're on.
Okay, my question is, is, uh, are we gonna add people every week or is this it? Because it seems like the last three weeks we're adding more and more people.
It's, I don't think, I don't think it's every adding people. It's each department is bringing their motion relative to their department. Attendance. So each department has to bring a motion for their personnel within.
Um, I guess, I guess my question is, is. You know, in order to book the rooms and everything, we really should have had done our due diligence early on and figured out, you know, who was going. It seems like every week where. We are adding new people, so.
But it's all coming out of each department head's budget for travel and training and so.
I'm not questioning the budget, the budget portion of that. I'm just questioning whether are we going to see more of this moving forward? That's all.
And I don't think it changes the rate for, like, it's not like if you bought a block of so many rooms, you've got a better rate. It was like the conference rate. As I understood it, the conference rate. For attendance. So I don't think there's a financial implication. And I think with respect to each department. When they make their determinations about everybody's department had, has their own budget for travel and training that they can apportion. And this is HR's first motion on that issue.
Okay, so my take on this is that it is simply administrative that each department head is bringing these requests in when they're prepared to, uh, make the request, um. They might not get the rooms at the Omni. You may have to go across the street, uh, once a week, but. That's in the department head's hand and I'm fine with that. Question I do have on this is that, um. We have a third person to be determined and I'm questioning if we need a third person or why. Uh, we have not determined that yet. So I'll have to ask Allison to address that.
Um, I'm sorry, I had been away, as you know, and out of the loop for a little bit and, um, I'm, I'm trying to assess. Everybody in my department and give people opportunity for others within the department to go to a conference. And my information and stuff was here. So I just been back to the office and just trying to go through our budget book, our, our budget book, not the one that we do review. To kind of make sure that, um.
There's people distribution of access.
Conferences so that I might hold back on a different conference from somebody else going so that somebody for this, because it's local, it's in New Hampshire, it's in New Hampshire Association of Counties. HR has a big presence in here too, because we run our own trap, uh, on this conference. Um, so I would like to, maybe we'll get somebody else going. And if I'm not gonna go, I'll come back to the board and tell you I'm not sending somebody, but I wanted to, just in case because. The rate for registration goes up, um, and so I wanted to get the early bird rate if I could, if I'm sending someone. So I apologize. I typically don't do this, but this is unusual for me this, this year.
Okay, understood. Uh, it's within your budget?
Absolutely.
And you just need to decide how best being distributed for training and that's still at this moment truly determined.
Yes.
Because you've been out.
Yes.
Okay, great. That's, I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Uh, any other discussion on this? In that case, uh, Commissioner Churchello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, amended amendment to approve the employee retention and engagement ARPA fund project approval.
I move to amend the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four approval of the employee retention and engagement ARPA project fund to add the purchase of gift cards from. New Fields Country Store utilizing category two point three five of the ARPA project funds, fund as recommended by the Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Simply housekeeping.
Um, yeah, that's all. Uh, Commissioner Churchello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, long-term care discussion on. Proposals and evaluation for housekeeping services by our new director, Chantel.
Well, I'm gonna refer to Kendra.
Okay. What, it's been three days, you're not completely up to speed?
Not quite. Good morning, everybody. Um, so what you have before you is the RFP, housekeeping services, um, all the bids that came back. We sent seven out to vendors. The RFP went out to seven vendors, was posted to the website and also on public purchase. Um. Six vendors did site visits with Sam and Sam can speak to that if you have any questions. And then we had four RFPs come back. And then one of the companies that does site visit contacted Elaine and said that simply. The scope of the work was just too large for them to handle as a company. Uh, so on, uh, in the attached information that you have, you have all four of the proposals that were submitted. You also have a breakdown, um, that Elaine was able to compile together of some of the questions that we put together that we felt was meaningful as you review the RFP. Excuse me, as you review the proposals from the cleaning companies.
And. Do you, I guess to the extent that this is. From the site visits, this is how are we from a budgetary standpoint and by utilizing this, how are we going to come in from a budgetary standpoint and, um. Like, how effective do you think, do you think that there is? Do you ever, you know, from the site visit, who's going to be most affected? They're doing the job.
So I think when it comes to finances, Chuck would probably have, have to come in and help with that question because I believe that this is coming, this. Portion would be coming from government funds to cover. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, yeah, we, there's two hundred and sixty-five thousand in, uh, a new contracted services line under Hill Government for this purpose.
So all the quotes, with the exception of one, um, are within that budgeted amount.
Um, okay, so I just chime in on this, uh, point on this. It, this seems to be one of the unusual. Circumstances that we're not going with the low bid. And I read reasons for, uh, not going with the low bid. Uh, be, it seems that each of the proposals proposed. Uh, bec- it seems that each of the proposals propose something different.
Right.
And I'm wondering, um. If, I mean, I suppose I can accept this for now, but in the future, it would seem that we should be telling them. Uh, you know, in an R F P, this is what we expect, we expect four full-time employees and two, two part-time employees. And uh, you know, which was one proposal, I believe the one that you wanna, you're recommending at the moment. And then there's another one that was four or five part-time employees and only one or two a full-time now. Those are significant, uh, or or maybe we just take proposals, I I I I'm I'm just questioning, how come we got so many different. Uh, scenarios, it's, it was almost like it was a free-for-all that um, we called in the cleaning companies and said, okay, how would you clean the place? And that, your evaluation of the healthcare specialists, I think was very good. Um, because they specialized in um, cleaning facilities just like ours and had a lot of other experience. Where the other ones were experienced in schools and such, but it um, I don't know, it just seemed like. We could have been more um. Equitable in our.
If I if I could try to make first, like.
Certainly.
When I did the tours, I actually did give a recommendation of what I thought the labor should be, and then they just sent in what they thought they they needed to. Fill the job.
Yeah.
So I did give my recommendation for, you know, two staff members, seven days a week in assisted living and how many they would need for offsites, and how many days and how many hours.
And uh, did. The proposal that we ended up, that seems to be in the lead at this point, do you think that that's the best proposal?
I do. When I look at staffing and the responses that we're getting back, they seem to be the ones who want to work with us and make sure that we're satisfied with the service.
Okay.
Well, this is just for discussion, we haven't had a, we don't have a proposed contract in our hands at the moment, so.
Correct, we felt like it was pertinent to give you all um, the proposals so you could read through them, cause it does not. It's not specifically just covering assisted living, it's covering ancillary buildings, it's covering human resources. Um, it's not a determination for stamina just to make based on assisted living. It's truly what do all the other areas need as well, and so we felt like it needed a complete look over through you. So we could, if you had additional questions, which I'm sure you will as you review them, um, that we could then go back out and get those answers for you.
And then the capacity, I I think one thing that we want to take into consideration is the capacity to take on more space. Um, we're going to have the building next door, so if we um, form, I mean, we'll have to go back to out to R F P. But it is relevant in terms of, I think, uh, consideration now, do they have the capacity to expand potentially? Because if we bring in a crew now that learns the, it becomes familiar with our facility, then um, there's some advantage to that. If, you know, they're meeting our needs and expectations.
Okay, I think that concludes our discussion. We'll move on to the Sheriff's Office, travel and training request.
I move to approve a travel and training request for two Sheriff's Office employees, K M and B T, to attend the New Hampshire Association of Counties Annual Conference. Held at the Omni Mount Washington Resort November eleventh and twelve twenty twenty four at an estimated total cost of two thousand nine hundred and forty six dollars and twenty eight cents. As recommended by the High Sheriff.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this request? And yes, it is, there was more coming in. No discussion?
I don't, I.
If there's no discussion, I'll uh, call for a vote, Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Uh, I vote yes. All right, department head updates, I'm gonna start, go right around the room, please identify yourself for folks in Zoom land, uh, we'll start with Allison.
Hi, it's Allison Kivakowski, Senior Director of Human Resources, um, just busy, um, our staff is, like I said, in this building. So we're getting accustomed to our workspaces, um, we have the scarecrow thing again is coming up, so we're prepping for that. Um, there is some stuff going on with some of our retirees, and it's just, it's just um, busy. So that's where we're at, nothing, nothing pertinent, thank you.
Very good, Chantel?
Um, Chantel Juconan, I am starting day three, so I don't have too many updates, and I will defer to the rest of the team.
All right, Kendra.
Good morning, everyone, uh, assisted living, we have assisted living week coming up, so prepping for that, making sure that's all buttoned and ready to go. Um, we did have a positive, a COVID positive staff member test yesterday, um, so we are still in masks. Um, and working our way through that, they are per diem, per diem person, um, so that they don't work full-time. So that is a little bit to our advantage, uh, and then just helping transition Chantel into the community and welcoming her. And helping any way we can.
Just, um, how are we doing from a resident COVID uh, perspective, how many people are we still, do we still have gone quarantine?
And so.
I think that's Michelle's.
Yeah, and in assisted living, we are currently, um, all of our residents are COVID negative.
Great.
Excellent, all right, Michelle.
So Michelle Lance and Schmidt, um. Director of Nurses, um, so for COVID updates, um, we do have five staff. Uh, who are currently uh, positive, and again, that number kind of couple drop off, couple come on, as far as residents, we have one resident remaining up on F two. And um, that resident will be cleared on Saturday to go back to their unit. Um, however, uh, we are looking at remaining in masks right now, because we are tracking and trending the community numbers. And that's really what kind of drives um, our protocol for mask wearing throughout the facility, it's not just what we have in the building, but what's out of the building as well. So there'll be more to come on that, we have to look at those numbers and we look at them daily, uh, once we're completely resident-free. So more to come on that. Um, we are having a box lunch uh, to celebrate the deficiency free survey for all staff. As well as um, a meet and greet for Chantel, so that will be on Friday uh, from eleven to one. Everybody can come through, grab a box lunch, and um, you know, welcome Chantel to the team. And that is coming from a local business, so that was um, very well appreciated by them. And we are prepping for our annual skills fair in long-term care, it's a huge skills fair that's done every year to make sure that all of the licensed nurses. Meet and maintain their competencies for the year, so Chris has been working a lot on that, and that will run for probably a month. So that we we make sure we offer all staff the opportunity to attend.
Very good. Um, Chuck?
Uh, Chuck Nickerson, Finance Director, um, bench, we work on uh, some proposed language for legislation. It may end up not being submitted till November, because this year with uh, the elections and some new reps coming in potentially. There's actually two bites of the apple for submitting legislation, one would be September tenth and the other one would be in November. And so um, if this were to pass, this would mean, this is basically the, for the. Twelve point uh, four percent of H H S claims that the counties paid and the feds paid. Because of the increase in F map, that one, in fact, one one of twenty, and basically both the counties and the uh. Local government, because the increased F map paid for that for the first eighteen months, with no money's going back to the counties. For that duplicate payment, and the county's only supposed to be responsible for the non-federal share. So if the feds are paying for it, then at least in hindsight, it should come back to the counties. And so again, that would mean, I've had mentioned this before, but this would mean over twenty million dollars in total to the ten counties. And our county's share would probably be about three, three point three million, if I had to wager a guess. And so just trying to get the numbers from H H S uh, from D H H S for the first six months of that period. Uh, we know what the net claims were for state fiscal year of twenty one, but not for the last six months of the state fiscal year of twenty, so. I'll think of those numbers, if they come in later, then it'll just be part of the proposed legislation that Representative Stephen Pearson's want to um, you know, to be our sponsor. Uh, it'll just go in for November instead of uh, next week, so looking forward to get that. Done sooner than later, though. Um, just a reminder for those that attend, um, tomorrow is a big day as far as for N H A C meetings in Concord. Uh, as far as officers, executive committee meeting, I think the fiftieth anniversary, um, meeting was happening as well. And also, there's a uh, there's a signing event with U N H Cooperative Extension. I think several commissioners and other, you know, from across the counties and others are are attending. As well, so I think we'll probably be attending that and zipping back for the uh, employee appreciation uh, then over here for. The deficiency free survey, and uh, welcome aboard Chantel and and be uh, happy to meet with you and over. You know, how our departments work together to the county board, so. Um, and I'll just close with, you know, busy as usual, brunch and everything else, so.
Very good, Leila?
Hi, good morning, I'm just gonna open and close with busy as usual.
All right, very good. Okay, so we'll, you you don't want to remind anybody for, to turn in their annual reports soon? I'll help you with that. Yeah, I think so.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, return your report.
Enter Kathy Stacy.
All right, we'll go to Zoom land and we'll start with the sheriff.
Good morning, uh, nothing really new to report, we did um, send over a recommendation for one of the cars. Uh, out of the four cars, we picked one of the best cars, and I think Jude has that information. And uh, could be a good asset for if someone needs a spare car, otherwise than that. Would good go for week, have a great week.
Great. I I want to thank Commissioner Coyle for making the suggestion last week that we take a good look at it, and I'm glad that you concur. That uh, there's an advantage for us to keep one of these cars, I, that's positive for the county.
To be honest with you, you know, it it it's a great idea, I know we, uh, when it comes to our transport vans, when. We don't trade them in, we give them over to um, we give them, we give them over next door, to be honest with you, I really never even thought about. Um, given one of the cars, you know what I mean? But it was a great idea by Commissioner Coyle to do it, so whatever we can do to help the county, that's, that's how we run over here, and thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
We have a great team here, uh, Jude?
Good morning, yes, um, we are happy to have that vehicle, Jimmy thinks he can get a good year out of it, so I hope it's a of value to the county. We are um, crazy busy as usual, all's well. The uh, the painting is underway in the Human Resources Building, it's lovely, they made a very nice color choice. I'm sure everyone will be pleased when it's completed, it's probably gonna go into next week, and then we'll make sure that everything's properly aired out and whatnot. Before we move the folks back in. Um, we, the flooring was replaced behind switchboard Tuesday this week. It went really well, they completed it in one day, I think they're very happy with it, they had those mats that had to be taped down to the floor and so on, and it looks, it looks really nice. So, um, we're happy to have that done, the team is over in the P T gym this week, we're disassembling. Preparatory to next week, it'll be a asbestos abatement in the flooring, and the flooring will be replaced in the following week. The P T gym is working out of Driscoll Ground, and the remainder of their stuff is going into the Hilton Auditorium, so. We've got them spread out for a couple of weeks, but they've been really flexible and and cooperative, so that's gone well also. Um, the duct work at the jail dishwasher was finally completed yesterday, they got the fitting Tuesday and got here straight away at seven o'clock yesterday morning. So that's finally completed, um, that's about it, I sent a ton of stuff up to D E S and D O T and et cetera last week. I was really happy to have the emergency generator for the new building, the air permit, go out for that, because that was months in the making. So I was pleased to happily deliver that over to the post office, and that's gone, so. Um, all's well, we're doing fine, thank you.
Great, thank you, Jude, uh, Jason?
For just a second, which is that, I don't get, as nice as it was of the sheriff to give me credit for the idea. The idea really began with Superintendent Henry, who has seen it in other counties, so. Jason, you know, to the extent that I proposed your, I I stole your idea and proposed it out. Your credit is to you for the uh, county farm.
All right, nice, all right, Jason, you can go now.
Thank you, uh, thanks Jude, yes, the the hood's up, so now we can finish the dishwasher uh, getting fully installed. Which is great, cause we can stop paying for styrofoam, which is gonna be, you know, that's costing quite a bit, so we're very much looking forward to that. In-house, we have a hundred and forty-eight today, uh, it'll be Association of Counties tomorrow, and I want to say a big, a thank you, uh. Sheriff's, I don't know if he's still on there, but last week he arranged for a taco truck to come up here for the Sheriff's Department and the jail, and um. It was awesome, both our staffs got to intermingle together, um, and uh, it was really nice, my staff loved it, I talked to the sheriff and his staff loved it, and uh. Um, it was just really a a good time, paid for our budgets, and um, little things like that go a long way uh, on this campus. And along with what you guys are doing and H R is doing, I just think it's a, uh, fantastic, and I I really enjoy it, thank you.
All right, great, thank you, Jason, uh, Kathy?
Good morning, everybody, so a couple of things, um, our numbers here are really looking good, um, so far this. Last two months, so we're pretty happy, because we're not seeing negative numbers, we're seeing uh, increase in activity, which is. About time, so we're pleased about that, we did have, we started off September with a bang, we had a eight point five million dollar. Cash sale in Rye, people who already own a piece of property that they paid over twenty-two million dollars for. Um, so it's um, kind of, kind of interesting, so they're kind of building their little block of property over there in Rye. Um, I can, I had a question with regards to, I need to think about the cleaning contract. Because obviously the current cleaning contract here ce- ceases in December. So I need to have an idea of what type of timeframe we're looking, should I be going out? Forbid, should I be asking about extending the current contract, so I want some guidance from the commission on that subject, please. So, that's one of the things, I will uh, tell you that the legislative calls for N H A C, we're gonna have our first call on September twentieth. Just to uh, kind of jumpstart and have a little discussion, but basically, we're gonna wait till December sixth to start weekly calls. So it'll be one o'clock on Fridays, uh, every Friday, unless, you know, we have a N H A C meeting. And um, I I want to say, Pat Conway here offered uh, up a luncheon last Tuesday for staff. For her staff and my staff, she had um, she had them come in from the the um. The back room in Manchester, and uh, the staff were really thrilled, so a big shout out and a thank you to Pat. Uh, for providing that food, and that's probably, I think, about all I have, thank you.
Great, Jude, you want to uh, make a comment on the housekeeping services?
I did briefly, um, substantial completion is still, although the schedule's being updated, we should have something else within two or three weeks. But we're looking at the end of June now, with the soonest, Kathy, so chances are. We'll be probably moving in, I would hope by September, again, the schedule's still being looked at, but you've got at least six months of cleaning if you're ending up at the end of December.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, Commissioner.
All right, um, I think that concludes our uh, department head updates. And we'll now move to new business, old business, commissioners, do you have any new business?
I don't.
Commissioner Cherichello? No. Okay, I do. Uh, and it's rather lengthy, so I'd ask you to bear with me till the end, I'll be happy to give uh, everybody ample time to discuss this. Three weeks ago, I asked the question concerning why we paid fifteen thousand dollars in January. And only fifteen hundred dollars in July for liability insurance for our construction project. Uh, Chuck said that he had to identify a formula to get an explanation, which we do not have yet. This question would have been answered quickly if we simply had gotten the receipts for all the rese- all the expenses. From our Harvey Construction Contract, as the contract states. Somehow I feel commissioners have gotten the impression that there is some subversive reasons. Why I'm insisting on seeing all these receipts, I don't know what you think I'm trying to do with these receipts except to read them. There is simply no harm in asking Harvey Construction to include the receipts, and I doubt they would object. Since they're already contractually obligated. Our finance department will be compelled to review the receipts if they're supplied to us, it's only a little extra work, and I don't think they would strongly object. Also, there's been an assertion that. we, that I was trying to hire an owner's project manager who would have reviewed the project finances. And that had some subversive connection to my insisting on getting these re- receipts. In fact, the phone call the Commissioner Coyle and I received from a supposed investigative reporter the day after Commissioner Cherichello was vacated from being chairman accused me of saying the first thing I did as county commissioner was to try and hire my friend to manage the project so that I could get a kickback. The person claimed to be an investigative reporter associated with W M U R who said they would need to participate, that we would need to participate in an interview that would take place on Sunday morning here at Frontwood. This was very upsetting to me and my family. We showed up and when no one else showed, we realized that we were hopes. Uh, based on telephone records, this call was allegedly made by the brother of one of Commissioner Cherichello's supporters. This, of course, is totally untrue, and I don't understand why anyone would think this way. The only reason I want to see these receipts is to ensure the proper allocation of taxpayer money. And with that, I have a letter to the commissioners. Harvey Construction continues to submit payments that do not have all of the associated invoices. They have agreed to provide all invoices from all subcontractors and vendors with each application for payment. And we are not enforcing this aspect of the contract. Below are the provisions in the contract related to this issue. Section eleven dot one dot four. With each application for payment, the construction manager shall shall submit payrolls, petty cash accounts, receipted invoices or invoices with check vouchers attached, and any other evidence required by the owner or architect to demonstrate that payments already made by the construction manager on account of the cost of work equal or exceeds progress pay- payments already received by the construction manager plus payrolls for the period covered by the present application for payment less that portion of the progress payments attributable to the cus- construction managers fee. Therefore, I move that we submit a letter to Harvey Construction requesting them to submit all invoices and receipts that correspond with each request for payments henceforth. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'm not going to support a second on this because I would submit that we are receiving what we're supposed to be receiving for the contract.
Okay. Um, then there's no second, there's nothing we can do. I'm making my attempt to uh receive uh all of the receipts. I'm still insistent that I respectfully disagree that these receipts should be submitted to us. I would like to review them, and I don't think that it's a burden on anyone for us to get it, but um it takes two people to agree to that uh action, and if I don't have a a second or a second commissioner to to agree to that, then I'll uh stand down for the moment and agree that I don't get the receipts.
Uh, you know what? I want a second so we can have a discussion.
Okay, well, there's a motion on the floor and a second. So discussion on the motion.
Still have, it's business.
It's still new business, either way.
It doesn't matter.
Okay, so Mr. Godu. Well, Commissioner Godu, can you explain to me your expertise in reading a seventy-five million dollar construction project? What educational background do you have that makes you an expert at looking at whether materials are right, wrong, should be different, or such? Please explain.
I don't need any special training, except my twenty-five years of business experience and uh my experience reading the contract that was provided to us and consulting with others who have experience in this business. The receipts that are are be, are simple business receipts, therefore general liability insurance, therefore portapotties, therefore labor, therefore basic things, therefore going to Lowe's and other places to go pick up uh goods. It I I it's just a simple matter of, I'd like to see that they didn't buy dishwashers at Lowe's, that they bought lumber or, you know, whatever they were supposed to do. It's it's simply receipts. We get receipts for everything else. And uh they're compelled by this contract to get receipts, and I simply want to review them. Uh, what what I would do with that review? I don't know. I I guess I might question something if it didn't look right, and I'm sure I'd get a good answer. Because I I I but I just want to look at the receipts. It's that simple.
That's a nice, long explanation. Um, I I too am a business owner for twenty-four years as a real estate agent. And I will tell you that I have zero expertise in construction. You, as a printer broker, have no construction background. Zero. Is that true?
Oh, I, you know what?
That's not important.
If I
It is important, be, hold on a second.
A matter of business.
It's it's not a matter of business, and I wish to read a statement that I received a year ago from Warren Street in response to Mr. Godu bullying and harassing staff at both Warren Street and Harvey Construction. And I won't read the whole thing, but I just want to read the the highlights here. This is Jonathan Hill, okay, who after Mr. Godu peppered the the staff, Jason, I mean, uh, Jonathan wrote, I had told him that again, in my thirty-five years' experience, I have not witnessed a commissioner involve himself to this degree. But if it was his desire, he was welcome.
If I may.
Hold on a second, let me finish. Okay? What Jason, what um what Jonathan is saying is, is in his fifty, he's the experienced one. And he's never seen any, any issue with anything. We've had this discussion many times. This is a political ploy, and for you to do it last minute before, five days before an election is really dropping to a real low.
Commissioner Coyle.
I I just ask that we move on here because I do think that that I we, it is heated, obviously, between both of you commissioners. We are, the elect, the primary is Tuesday, and I kindly ask that we move forward to public comment.
Uh, I have no more comments on the subject. Are are you done?
No, no, I think, I think as acting chair, you using this as a political thing is the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen. I'm in really, I'm embarrassed uh for 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 the, for this meeting, to be honest with you. You know, you've been, you've been told and you've asked many times, and nobody, not any of the department heads, Chuck Nickerson, the delegation members have asked what you're asking for, and for you to pretend that you're an expert in this field is extremely laughable. So, I I just think you using this platform as a political ploy is pretty, pretty sad. Thank you.
But for the public's, just, I will just briefly, just for the public, in terms of the process for this, when I, we've talked about this numerous times. There, we, to suggest that we don't get the receipts is is inaccurate because we get a ton of invoices supported with every warrant, which is the submission of payment for uh work that's performed. The process by which that is um re- reviewed and evaluated, it is reviewed by uh Chuck's team in finance. It's reviewed in facilities with Jude's team. Warren Street reviews it and Harvey reviews it. We also have weekly meetings with um the team here at the county and the team within Warren Street and Harvey to have weekly meetings regarding progress uh of the building, any construction issues. In fact, in those weekly meetings, we actually get all the meeting notes from that to the commissioners directly. Um, again, with each warrant, we get a very good um detailed re- receipts and invoices for work that's performed. It is true, we do not review every receipt from Lowe's, but um, as someone who is in the conduct, construction industry, I can speak to that. If you buy a pack of screws at Lowe's, we may not have reviewed that, but when we're talking about the scale that which we're building, lumber invoices, things like that, that come from, you don't, you don't typically buy you know, lumber in the, in, you know, all your two-by-fours at Lowe's, you're ordering big, big pallets of lumber, for instance, from a lumberyard and that is provided for. What we're talking, these warrants range from, I think they've ranged from one to three million dollars, and in the course of that one to three million dollar warrants, your concerns, the amount that is sort of the non-receded portion is usually under twenty thousand dollars. We're talking, and it's often far less, but to your point, we don't specifically see the portapotties, which is a contract and or, but what we do see is portapotties. When the price increase went up, what we noticed was more portapotties because the, during the mechanical systems, which is what is taking place now, where mechanical systems are doing the electrical, doing the HVAC, doing the plumbing, and that's what the phase we're in now, during mechanical systems, you can have multi, unlike, you know, doing excavation work, we just have the excavation people, mechanical systems, many different pe- crews on the job site. You need more twins. So I just say to the extent that there's concern that we're not doing or um with respect to, you know, the formula for the liability insurance, I don't think it was an accurate represent- representation of what Chuck said. Chuck said it is formulaic. He just didn't have it off the top of his head. He didn't, it's not that he didn't access it or didn't have it. It was just sitting in this boardroom right now. So, with that.
I'd like to add on to that if I may. Um, respectfully, Commissioner Coyle left out the fact that we have a delegation member, um, five members that are on the building committee that meet every six weeks with Jude. I have attended uh ninety percent of those meetings. It was maybe one that I couldn't re, I couldn't do because I had a previous uh uh appointment. Um, and so we've got many, many eyes on this. I agree with Commissioner Coyle that that's the case. And I'm gonna ask Commissioner Godu, have you gone to any of these delegation um building committees? Because everyone was invited. Have you been to one?
I'm not answering any of your questions.
The answer is no. The answer is no.
No, I haven't.
And you know it, so stop.
Because that's not what, that's not what this was about.
Steve, the answer is no. If you really had a concern about it, you're, when I went to those meetings.
Gentlemen, I kindly ask that we move on.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Um, I think our discussion is concluded. Uh, Commissioner Cherichello on the motion.
New.
Commissioner Coyle. Can I vote yes? We'll revisit this in the next board forms. Um, okay, moving on. Public comment.
Or does anybody else have any new business or old business?
Oh, yeah, Allison.
I did want to go back to the M A S contract. Um, it was a verbal agreement that was entered into for these rates back on December first, twenty twenty-three, but we had no addendum contract, so we're gonna use today's date as nine five, twenty twenty-four, if you don't mind.
Sounds great.
That makes sense. Uh, barring no other business, um we'll go to public comment. Tom?
Um, okay. Where do I start? Obviously, uh, House Bill fifty-four has caused a lot of problems in my life, and it looks like it's really causing a problem over there in Brentwood, so I'm just hoping you guys can, you know, Tuesday, unfortunately, we all know what happens. You guys have done a great job, and the eye, the prize is in front of all of us. And and I just hope that we can go forward. Um, you know, nobody's more upset with House Bill fifty-four than me, and I know there's a lot of tension between the two gentlemen. You guys have done a great job. You you know, if you didn't do the job you're doing, we wouldn't be classified as the best county out of ten. And the prize is across the street and so on and so on. So I just hope, you know, I've been watching for one year and eight months, one year and eight months, and it looks like the heat is really on, so you guys have done a great job. Try, try to finish a great job that you've done, huh? I'm sorry about it. We all know House Bill fifty-four is a pain in my ass, trust me, so uh now I'm on YouTube swearing, but
That was A R S, right?
You've done a great job, and you know. You know, it's been tough for me to watch it, and I know Balti is, and I know, you know, Commissioner Coyle, you guys have done a great job, and that's why we're the best there is. Rockingham is strong because of you three people, so it's gonna be a few tough months, but just try to be strong for all of us. You know, it's hard for me to watch these meetings, but I love everybody, so just try to be tough and keep the prize in front of you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom. Uh, I don't think there's anybody else here from the public to comment, so uh at this point, I would accept the motion to go into non-public.
That I just want to wish everybody who's running on Tuesday good luck. And with that, I move to enter into non-public pursuant to ninety-one eight four one three, section two personnel matters, and I believe it's right, Allison. Anyone else? Uh, Chuck, and Chuck.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, second.
Second. Uh no discussion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, we're going into non-public.
Um, we had four, we're back into public. After being a non-public session, we had uh four non-publics with respect to the first and a third, the third non-public discussions. I move to seal those minutes indefinitely because it could adversely affect the reputation. Um, to divulge it, would adversely affect the reputation of someone other than a member of this board. And I move to seal the second non-public uh indefinitely because at this point it could render opposed action in effect.
Second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello?
I mean, yes.
And I vote yes.
And I have one more thing, if you, if you can indulge me very briefly. Um, if possible, what I'd like to do is i- i- in in the the future meetings, I'd like to re, um I would like to go back. Many months ago, I made a point that we should be reviewing uh non-public minutes that were sealed indefinitely. We have never released any of those. We should be reviewing those. I I know the law says ten years, but uh on the face of transparency, I think either we do it in a meeting or a workshop to review some of those um minutes that really don't need to be sealed anymore. Um uh, you know, we 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 started talking about it, we just never went through it, and uh for for transparency purposes, I'd like to see if we can uh you know, open some of those. If the public wants to see them, they can.
Sounds good. No issue. Let's just schedule some time and I mean, I think it would make sense to do it close to the end of the year, so then we could, because then we have the continuity of the year, so I would suggest that we take pick a date in December and do, you know, and then pick a workshop date in December. State, we're gonna use a period of years, and then that way you have end of the year.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, because waiting ten years is just that you, the the people that have to review those is just not reasonable. Um, we do this in dairy on a yearly basis. It just makes it easier for everybody. Um and then we don't have to archive ten years worth of records, so.
But the question is, to Godu's point, how many years do you look back? Because for
We're gonna look back ten years ago?
Oh, no, 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 no. Um, I'm I'm saying for us, for us three commissioners, I think, what we've done in non-public is where I focus. I'm not, I mean, I'm not interested in opening back ten years worth of non-public.
But theoretically, every year if you're reviewing, you should review more than one year's worth, right? Because that's, conceptually.
Yeah, don't you, don't you agree? Don't you agree that um if you did it yearly? I mean, you can ke- keep them sealed if it's still sensitive information, but if it's past and it's not useful as um uh keeping it non-public, you just open it up uh and and you you have it, you know? Uh, it's just easier to maintain it that way for all, everybody involved, is the way I see it.
We're off topic right now, and I think this is worthy of making a discussion at a future meeting as to how we will proceed with uh your suggestion. I appreciate that suggestion.
I appreciate your concern.
But I don't think we need to uh discuss it any further right now. Uh, I'd prefer to receive a motion.
Move, I move to adjourn.
Oh, motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Okay, uh, Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I agree. We're adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.